It is 6:30, so I'm gonna go on a call us to order here. Looks like we've got everybody with us except for one planning commissioner I know who is traveling, and so with that, I'm going to ask Commissioner Altizer to open us up with prayer.
Please bow. Dear Lord, thank you so very much for all that you've blessed us with. Thank you for the city. Thank you for all of the people that live here in our constituency. Thank you for everything, Lord. Be with us tonight and help us to make wise decisions, informed decisions, to help our friends, family, and all the people that live here. Lord, thank you for blessing us, and please watch over us and protect us and guide us. All this, we pray in your name. Amen.
Amen. Caitlin, will you call the roll, please?
Altizer?
Here.
Evans?
Here.
Hasty?
Here.
Longmire?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Silkwood?
Here.
Slattery?
Here.
Coker?
Here.
All present.
Thank you. That's eight of us here, and as I mentioned, Commissioner Hardwick will not be here this evening. Next up on our agenda item is a public hearing. Before we do that, though, I am actually gonna just entertain a motion that we adopt the agenda as presented.
Second.
Got a motion from Commissioner Silkwood, and a second from, I believe it was Commissioner Slattery down there. Okay, thank you. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none. The agenda is approved for this evening. Next up is item three, is a public hearing. It's a public hearing to hear comments on a request to amend Indian Lake Center Phase Three Final Development Plan to add daycare to the list of permitted uses. We did not have anybody sign up for that, so I'm gonna declare that public hearing closed, and then move on to item four, public comments relative to agenda items only. Again, nobody has signed up for that. I'm sorry, I'm skipping a public hearing now. We also had a public hearing to hear comments on a request by Mark McDaniel to amend the Mayfair Phase Two Final Development Plan to reconfigure the proposed development. Again, we had nobody sign up for the public hearing portion of that, so I'm gonna declare that public hearing closed, and then move on to item four, public comments. This is relative to agenda items only. Nobody signed up for those, so we're just gonna move past the public comments section and on to item five, which would be approval for the minutes from our September meeting. I think everybody's probably had a chance to review those. Is there any changes or revisions, any discussions that commissioners want to bring up?
I'll make a motion to accept.
We have a motion from Commissioner Altizer to accept. Second, second from Commissioner Slattery. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none. The minutes from our September 5th meeting are approved. Now, moving on to item six, development plans. First thing up is the, relative to that first public hearing, the reference for Indian Lake Center Phase Three Final Development Plan Add Use. Do we have a representative from the developer here? You've done this before. We're gonna let Sidney kick off on this, and then we'll kinda get to any questions, anything that you might want to add on that. Sidney, will you get us started, please?
Certainly. This request is in Indian Lake Center, which covers much of this area along Indian Lake Boulevard, and this is a really old pud that is general commercial plan development, and I have included in your report a list of the permitted uses. This is a request to add daycare to that list. That request is a little less impact than the list, the uses there, if you notice. They are asking to do this on just about two acres of the property here on Maple Row Boulevard, as you head towards, from here towards Indian Lake Boulevard, and that's the red hatched area shown. They're wanting to add that use there, and then if it's approved, then they'll later come back with a final development plan amendment, depending on, to align the building with what's on the FDP and everything like that. That there is the image that they are presenting, and they understand that if they're requesting that use, that they'll be tied to that image. If some, if another daycare comes in, they'll have to go through this process as well.
Thank you, Sidney. Do you have anything?
Better? Yes, much better. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Cal Gentry, Civil Land Company, representing the applicant Little Sunshine Daycare. I don't believe there were any comments, so we're just here to answer any questions you have. Thanks.
Questions, comments from commissioners? Well, while they're thinking about it, I'll kinda get started on this. One thing that we always kinda talk about here is just future uses of property and adaptability of property. That's kinda been an issue that we've been talking about lately. Know a little, I know just enough about daycares to be dangerous, and I know that they, as an industry, it's just hard for them to find folks right now. So I just want to get a little sense, if this owner's applicant, you know, five, 10 years from now moves on, does something else, what would be some other possible uses for this building?
Other possible uses?
Because it's a great-looking building.
Yeah, I could see this becoming an office building fairly easily. You know, I was just, I was impressed by the level of detail they're willing to put into this elevation. They just opened one in Franklin that looks exactly like what's up there on the board. But, you know, long-term, could this be reused? Yes, definitely. It could be an office building, medical office, probably quite a few uses.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Other questions, comments from Commissioner? Since everybody's being bashful then, then I'm going to make a motion to appro, oh, Commissioner Hasty?
Well, you were about to beat me to it. I think it's a good use for the property, and I was gonna make a motion that we approve.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second then. Caitlin, will you call the roll, please?
Altizer?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Hasty?
Yes.
Longmire?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Silkwood?
Yes.
Slattery?
Yes.
Coker?
Yes.
All approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up on the agenda is Mayfair Phase Two Final Development Plan Amendment. Do we have a representative from the developer here? Let's call him up to the podium, please. And Timothy, I believe this was your project, so if you'll get us started, please.
Thank you. So, this amendment is a substantially reduced scope from the currently approved master plan. The image up on the screen is what's currently approved, and then the second image in your staff report is the proposed amendment. The biggest change is that all the property behind the Bradford Berry House is now shown as undeveloped, and that's proposed to be donated to the city along with the Bradford Berry House and the cemetery. So instead of, with the current plan donating 1.63 acres with the Bradford Berry House and the cemetery, they would be donating a little over 13 acres to the city. The four outlots along, or the three outlots along Main Street are reconfigured to eliminate the rear access road, so it's sort of a, sort of a limited rear access, limited access road in favor of a common drive aisle that would run along the backs of those three outlots. And then they've, they've sort of reconfigured out those three outlots, well, the four outlots themselves to better suit potential tenants. They have submitted a traffic study, which I believe is under review by Public Works Department. And then this, should this be approved tonight, their next step would be to go to General Committee and then go before BOMA for one reading on October the 24th for final approval. And then all the, all the proposed uses are the same as on the current plan. The, all the, all of that 13 acres would be permitted uses there would be government, all government-related uses would be allowed. If I can please my report?
Thank you, Timothy. Y'all introduce yourselves, and if you have anything to add, please. Thank you. Do you have anything that you want to add to Timothy's report, please?
I don't think we have anything to add here to answer questions.
Okay. Would y'all, since your microphone wasn't on, will y'all state your names?
Sorry about that. Mark McDonald, Oldacre McDonald.
Roy Hassel, Barge Design.
Thank you. Open up to questions and comments from commissioners. Recognize Commissioner Altizer.
Timothy, this is for you. So what I see is everything behind the Bradford Berry House, everything behind the cemetery, all the way to the back of the property, will become city property?
Correct.
Okay. Just want to make sure you know some things. Aladdin has used of those roads? Are you aware of that?
Yes, so there'll be, the easements that are currently in place would remain in place.
Okay, and they're prepared to deal with keeping those roads up?
Yes.
And the maintenance? Okay. Just wanted to make sure of that. All right, I have no other questions.
Commissioner Silkwood?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. You know, I'm all for, you know, having more green space, and I like this proposal actually quite a bit. You know, I think there's a lot of good use the city could do there, you know? We're always looking for new athletic fields, for youth sports, and, you know, different things like that. And honestly, field space that's not floodplain is at a premium. That's kind of a rare, a rare thing around here. I have good knowledge of that. But I do have a couple of questions, and this again is maybe more for Mr. Witten. So the connector road, this, that connection road between where Floor and Decor's parcel is and this and Main Street would no longer be built?
Correct. Not, would not be built by this developer. That would be up to the city, if the city gives the...
And they may never do that. So the follow-up question to that is that, that connector road, is that something that Floor and Decor and sort of those parcels over there were sort of counting on when they came before us and was approved? Like, how does that fit into this if that connection road is not there?
Right. That they are, they're not counting on that road. That was something that the city asked them to, just to sub out so that it could, a connection could be made in the future.
Okay. All right, and one more question, more for the developer. So just out of curiosity, what, what is your motivation to donate these 13 acres? I mean, that seems rather generous and kind of an interesting...
You know, I talked to the owner into doing this. When I first suggested it to him, he thought I was crazy. But I, you know, given the economic times we're in with interest rates, et cetera, I said, you know, I really don't want to buy this, and maybe you should consider, as successful as you've been giving it to the city. And he kinda came around to it slowly, and obviously he'll take a tax deduction on that gift.
Right.
So I think it comes out to be a win-win deal, you know, that he just wanted to do something good, I think.
Okay. Good answer. I like it. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments from commissioners? Can you put that in the form of a motion?
I approve the request.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. And I assume that that was approval with the all-staff comments. All right. All right. Caitlin, will you call the roll, please?
Altizer?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Hasty?
Yes.
Longmire?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Silkwood?
Yes.
Slattery?
Yes.
Coker?
Yes.
Motion stands.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up on our agenda is item seven. We've got a couple of site plans to review. The first one is for Stonecrest, Phase Five, Sections Two and Three, Town Home Site Plan. Do we have a representative? You're on your way up. All right, we appreciate it. Grant, I believe this one is yours, so if you'll kick us off?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the Final Development Plan for Stonecrest was approved in 2007. This included 136 single-family homes and 139 townhomes. This is the, the townhome portion. That's the 139 townhomes that were part of that Final Development Plan that was previously approved, and this project has already been through some plat approvals and construction plan approval, so it's been moving forward. But if you look at the 2007 design book, it did not have a whole lot of detail. Typically, what we require today would be a lot more elaborate than, than what was provided with that. But in terms of the renderings, it didn't really have the size of the rear on that. And we've looked at this, and based on what they submitted, the applicant has, has shown a primary brick and secondary siding, which one of the things that we looked at was, was that need to be probably a hardy, you know, to be equivalent to, to what the renderings were showing. So in looking at that, we, we felt comfortable. They, we did work with Southeastern on the renderings, and we feel pretty comfortable with, with where we, where we have gotten to this point, and, and they've agreed to continue to work this out with us. On, on some of the, the rear elevations, we just wanted more rear features on the roof there, because the roof line is, is pretty high there. So if you skip to the next one there, on, oh, that one right there, yes. That, that second drawing there, the second rendering, you can see that, that roof is pretty substantial there, and, and I think what they, they've gonna, they, they're gonna submit to us something that has a more of a vertical articulation, and, and then work with us on the, on anything that has four units and above, the four to seven unit buildings. They're gonna add some, some roof line features to try to break that up as well, which is, was, was one of our main concerns when, when Sidney and I, we're talking with them, and, and we're reviewing some of these things. And, but we, we do feel comfortable after, after working with them, that they, they, you know, and they said they will take care of the staff comments, and, and that the hardy, or that the siding is a hardy material, that it, that the site plans had substantial compliance with FDP.
Thank you, Grant. Did you introduce yourself, and if you have anything you'd like to add?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Jason Morlock, Morlock Engineering. Also have David Lucky and Clint Easley here as well, with Southeastern. No, we agree with all staff comments. Happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Questions, comments from commissioners? Commissioner Silkwood?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I would say, you know, the front elevations look much improved, but just kind of echoing what Mr. Green said, those, those rear roof lines are pretty blocky, and I would really like to see something a little more depth and variation. So just kinda reiterating that. That's my only comment. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Silkwood. Other questions, comments from commissioners? Commissioner Evans?
I would just like to reemphasize that this was approved in 2007, so that nobody gets confused about what we're actually doing here tonight.
Thank you for that, Commissioner.
I agree with you, Mr. Evans. We're about to overload Saundersville Road. It's gonna be like you're traveling home at night on Waltonberry Road.
Especially that hump just before Tamaris Way coming into town. That's, we're gonna have to do something there at some point. It's already a problem.
Commissioner Martin?
Hey, good evening. I'm new to the planning commission, and so I don't have a lot of the history. This, the, the loading on, on the road, it's what, 139 units times seven trips a day, it's gonna be 973, almost 1,000. But I think there's a project in, in the queue for Exit Eight to do something with it, to provide more connectivity. Did you guys pay an impact fee in 2007, or, or a negotiated fee, or nothing?
David Lucky, Southeastern, yes, we did. We contributed, I can't remember if it's 250,000 or $500,000 at that time with the approval of the zoning of the community. We also were actually the contractor that built, rebuilt Saundersville Road at that particular point in time.
Okay. All right, that's all the questions I had.
Thank you. Other questions, comments from commissioners? Seeing none. Commissioner Martin, you're still lit up. I think you're, I thought you were finished, I just wanted to make sure that we're... Okay. But seeing none, I'll make a motion to approve with all staff comments. Can I get a second on that, please? Got a second from Commissioner Longmire. Caitlin, will you call the roll, please?
Altizer?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Hasty?
Yes.
Longmire?
Yes.
Silkwood? Slattery?
Yes.
Coker?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up on the agenda under site plans, we have Vogue Towers at Drake's Creek Tower Expansion, site plan for it, and there's a waiver being requested. Do we have a representative here on that? Thank you. Timothy, I believe this one is yours as well. So if you just tell us a little bit, we got going on here.
All right. So this is a request by Vogue Towers to increase the height of their existing cell tower in Drake's Creek Park from 180 feet to 195 feet, and that increased height is in order to accommodate Verizon as a, as a provider on the tower. 150 feet is the maximum height allowed by the ordinance unless a modification is approved by the planning commission. When they first got approval back in 2020, they obtained a modification from the planning commission for 180 feet height, which is what it is now. So now they're requesting an additional 15 feet to add to that.
Thank you, Tim. Could you introduce yourself?
Sure. Good evening. My name is Michael Santafer. I represent Vogue Towers. I'm here to answer any questions.
Do you have anything that you'd like to add before we open up for questions or comments?
I think Timothy's explained it. It's basically an extension to the tower for Verizon Wireless to locate at 190 feet.
Okay. Open up to questions, comments from commissioners. Commissioner Silkwood?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Just a couple of questions. So Verizon is not currently on this tower, is that?
Correct. Only AT&amp;T is on the tower at the moment.
Okay. That's interesting. So, and then another question, I guess you or Mr. Witten could answer. How does this additional height impact the fall radius, especially as it applies to that park maintenance building, which there's a lot of folks that work in there every single day? So that's a concern of mine.
So the tower company has stated, this tower actually was manufactured by Saber Communications. They're just a big tower manufacturer. Their engineer came back confirming that it will comply with the fall radius that was originally approved. The, I don't, I don't know if you have the structural...
We don't have it up there.
Okay. It's, what they do is go through the structural analysis, and they analyze certain points, and the bolts that will be at the extension essentially will be the weakest point there. Therefore, that would collapse. It, this would almost create a double collapse. So the original design that was to do a 50% there will still maintain. I've got a copy of the structure, if that would help.
We did get a verification, written verification of that from their engineer. So there will essentially be two crumple zones, the original one, which would commit the 90-foot fall radius, plus the additional one. So there should, there should be no impact or increasing of that radius.
Correct.
Thank you. That was kinda what I was looking for, to see if there was gonna be any additional impact with the additional height on that parks maintenance building.
No, ma'am.
Commissioner Hasty?
You're just leasing this property from the city, right?
Yes, sir.
Does this impact your lease agreement?
I don't deal with the real estate part, but my understanding is they've worked this out.
Okay.
And so everyone, they've, have approval for this.
Okay. Hopefully the lease price went up a little bit.
I don't know. With, since with the city, I assume it's public record, so...
Yeah, my, my understanding it is that it does go up.
Commissioner Slattery?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm not sure if I'm directing this to you or to you, Timothy. How visible is this to the houses that are just beyond it currently? And if it's not visible, is 15 more feet gonna make it suddenly that much more prominent in their line of sight?
Sure. So at, at, at the back of the staff report, of their, their submittal, there are some photo simulations of what the, how the tower will appear to the residences at the back of the park, such as Long Klein Avenue. I think we've got one of those photos. Yes, that's, I think that one up there is on the park road, but then the second set of photos, which we don't have up on the screen, but is in the, is in the submittal, shows what that would look like from the residences that backed up to those railroad tracks.
So that, that photo's reflecting the additional 15 feet?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Is Verizon gonna have better signal than my AT&amp;T phone now? That's what we're all thinking. All right, so we, somebody has a picture I can see that shows what it looks like from the, the neighborhood?
You want me? Is it okay for me?
Absolutely, yeah.
This one's kinda not fair. It was taken in the wintertime, it was all the tree. But here's the existing, and again, you know, from this vantage point we're taking, if it was summertime, it's, it's pretty well shielded.
Okay. All right, thank you. Thank you.
He says it's shielded, but if you're down at ground level looking at it, yeah, you might not see the base. Just look up. All you gotta do is look up. And I can see it from pretty much my house. Yeah, so you can see it. It's not hard to spot. It stands way above.
Use your microphones. Use your microphone.
It stands way above.
So is there any consideration of those, those camouflage approaches? You know, there's, there's the big tree at Val State, and I see other things around the country, like the big palm tree. I don't think we want a big 190-foot tall palm tree in the middle of Hendersonville. But are there ways to, to minimize the look of this?
So there are various stealth applications. Generally, those are based on where it is. So if, if this was the edge of a, it is in a park, but this is the baseball field. If it was edge of a park that's wooded, and you were only gonna build something maybe 120 feet, then you would get away with a pine tree that might be able to blend in. At 180 and now, you know, proposed 195 feet, it's, you wouldn't want a tree because it's going to be a very big tree.
Okay, again, completely out of my depth, but I'll, or out of my height, but I'll ask. Again, completely out of my depth, but I'll, or out of my height, but I'll ask. We have a lot of helicopter traffic in Hendersonville. Does this in any way start limiting any, I don't know if there are flight paths that they always take, but does this in any way get us into another layer of, of air control requirements?
So all of the towers are submitted and approved by FAA. So it, this was approved as no danger to air traffic. The reason that this will more than likely be the last request ever is anything above 200 feet typically requires tower lighting. And I don't know for certain, but I don't believe the city wanted this thing to be flashing and blinking. So nothing from here can go any higher. But it is been, it is approved with FAA, which will not cause any trouble.
Okay. Thank you. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Silkwood?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I'm not a big fan of waivers at all, but having spent a lot of time at Drake's Creek Athletic Complex, I can tell you that the service, and as you probably well know, the service over there has been terrible. So, I mean, having this tower is really kind of a safety issue. You know, making sure that people can dial 911, people can get in touch with each other. So I'm gonna support it. I don't see why we wouldn't. I think more than anything, it's something that's really needed and I can't believe Verizon wasn't on here to begin with. That's my kind of only question. So thank you.
This, yes, the original was approved 2020 and I think Andy from the, his, every six months emailed me, when's Verizon going on? So...
Well, with that, before I entertain a motion to approve, when is Verizon going on if we approve this? How long would, how long would it take?
So I don't know where they are with any kind of leasing activity. As we get into fourth quarter, the tower, most tower manufacturing companies get backed up, so it may take a couple of months to fabricate this extension. But I would think they're ready to go on in first quarter.
Okay. So looking at a six-month timeline, is that...
I would believe that. This is deemed one of their, they have various levels and I think this is litter, entered as one of their critical sites. So as quickly as they can, I believe.
Okay. Thank you. Well, with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve with all staff comments.
Second.
I didn't hear who made the, okay. We, we have a motion to approve from Commissioner Evans and a second from Commissioner Silkwood. Caitlin, will you call the roll, please?
Altizer?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Hasty?
Yes.
Longmire?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Silkwood?
Yes.
Slattery?
Yes.
Coker?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up on the agenda is item eight, staff level projects that have been approved. Timothy, I'll let you kind of walk through these as well as item nine and then kind of close us out with any comments that you have as well.
Sure. So under staff level projects that have been approved, we have 120 Harland Avenue Childcare Center. That was a site plan. Champion Car Wash Site Plan over on New Shackle Island Road. That was for the addition of some vacuums. The Chick-fil-A Canopy and Parking Lot Site Plan, that's where they reconfigured their drive, drive out, increased queuing. Forest Park Phase One FDP Amendment and the preliminary plat. Grant may have some details about that if you have questions about that. But Hendersonville Business Park, Section Three, that's a two-lot subdivision. We don't know what their goal is for that, but the subdivision is, is within the requirements of our subdivision regulations. Hendersonville Freewill Baptist Church addition. That's just a, a, a small addition to the front of their church on New Shackle. The next two, John Schaefer Lot, Final Plat and Rockland Road Kennel, that's, that's both the same address. One was a plat to, I think, clean up some right-of-way issues and then just a little parking lot addition to that, to that business. Saundersville Consolidation Plat, that's in front of Windcrest. That just, that was just a, a large parcel with some kind of perimeter, odd perimeter lot around it that will, that'll be all consolidated into one lot. The Tailgate Patio Addition, they'll be adding a, a great, at-grade level patio to the front of their building for some, some outdoor dining and doing some other improvements there. And then under staff level projects pending, we have a, a final plat for what, for Whataburger. That's to add a access easement. A plat for Durham Phase One, Section One. Martin Paws Exterior Remodel, that's over there next to Crylike. It was an old, used car dealership. It will now be a pet grooming and boarding facility. The Pockets Exterior Remodel, of course, the old, the old Texas Roadhouse over in Glenbrook. William Ferguson Subdivision Plat off of Louise Avenue. So that's, that's all the staff level activity. So for the upcoming Planning Commission Agenda, the next agenda, we've got some of the highlights of those is we've got a, an office development in the Hut Club that will be somewhat similar to the one that's, that's there as you first go into the Hut Club Development off to the, off to the east or to the left. There'll be some offices there. Grace Place Ministry will be submitting, or has submitted an amendment to their development plan. They've done quite a bit of redesign, rethinking of their concept. And instead of having, I think it was like four large apartment-style buildings, they're now gonna have more of a, a cottage concept, which I think will, will, will look a lot better and I think will be an asset to the community. And then Celebrity Coaches, they acquired the old Flowers Bakery off of Tennessee, Tennessee Way. The bakery, of course, was a warehouse distribution hub for them. They acquired that some time ago. Now they're going to be requesting a sizable addition to that, that old warehouse there. And then Tractor Supply is gonna be submitting for a, a wall mural. So bring, bring your artistry and be prepared to weigh in on that. And then our economic, economic development and community planner, Jay Ritterbeck, just put together a brief list of some things that are opening in the next two months. Half Batch Brewery, Cheerville will be opening. Costco in November. Big Play, which is the, where the old Holder Family Fund Center was located, that's gonna be, they've redone all of that inside and out for a new bowling alley. The Local, they'll be going in at the streets of Indian Lake where Sepia's was. And then, and then Pockets is, is planning to, to open within that time span as well. So that's all I've got.
Thank you, Timothy. Any other questions, comments from commissioners? Commissioner Silkwood?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Witten, can someone speak to the amendments at Forest Park? What those, what those are? I'm curious. Thank you.
Grant, can you?
Yes, sir. No problem. Yes, ma'am. This, that was actually where they, they brought back that development plan. They reduced it by five lots due to, I think, some mostly environmental issues. And then they moved the, basically on one side of the road, they were proposing the amenity center and they moved it to the other side of the road, but it wasn't anything. It, they reduced the number of lots. I think it was by five. And so, so because of that, it, it wasn't something that, that we, we felt that it was still substantially compliant with, with the original development plan. And so that wasn't, like, if they added lots or if they, if they did some sort of major rearrangement of streets or something like that, that would've been something that, that would not have been staff level at all. But, but given the, they kept everything generally the same as far as, well, the, the roads were the same and then the, the lots were reduced. It was, it was put forward as a staff amendment or a staff review. I'm sorry. Thank you.
And then I will, will mention just one more thing. At the, the next Planning Commission, we're planning to have the Westlake and Zening Ordnance text amendments before you. And then at the December meeting, that will be the, the top 30 future land use plan. Both of those are public hearings.
From the sound of it, from activity and just number of things that we need to, I would expect our November meeting to be rather lengthy. So let's, if y'all wanted to bring us dinner, wouldn't hate to. Nah, just plan on a longer evening, that, that evening on that. So just give everybody a heads up on that. But with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none. Motion carries. We are adjourned. Thank you all very much for your time this evening.